Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Present.
President Counsel Cahill.
Present.
President Counsel Capano.
Present.
President Counsel Chakoudas.
Present.
President Counsel Calucci.
Present.
President Counsel Seer.
Present.
President Counsel Lapierre.
Present.
President Counsel Lozzi.
Present.
President Counsel Net.
Present.
President Counsel Trahan.
Present.
President Counsel Walsh.
Present.
I'll rise for a moment of silence.
Mr. President, a special prayer for the Bracket family.
And Mr. President, prayer for the family and friends of Glenn Donovan.
Mr. President, also the Masucci family, lost their daughter.
Mr. President, also Albert Malo and Claudia Downey.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Communications.
Okay, we have quite a few from the mayor, it's okay to read them all.
Can we do them all?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, so communications from the mayor. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Richard Parker to the Grand Army Museum trustees. Mr. Parker's term is effective immediately and will expire on September 18th, 2020. Dear counselors, I am hereby reappointing all of the following members, effective immediately. Susan Carroll to the Park Commission, her term will expire May 1st, 2020. Jimmy Gonzalez to the Park Commission, his term will expire May 1st, 2021. Nelson Sosa to the Conservation Commission, his term will expire September 7th, 2019. Phil Brooks to the Conservation Commission, his term will expire September 7th, 2019. Laura Ippoliti to the Conservation Commission, her term will expire September 7th, 2018. Mary Lester to the Conservation Commission, her term will expire September 7th, 2020. And Michael Toomey to the Conservation Commission, his term will expire September 7th, 2020. Sincerely, Judy Flanagan Kennedy, Mayor.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second. Seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes. We have a council appointment for the Traffic Commission, James Breenzo, effective immediately. His term will expire September 30th, 2019. And a reappointment to the Traffic Commission, Christopher Rowe, effective immediately. His term will expire September 30th, 2019.
I'll make a motion to accept both.
Second. Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Public hearings.
First public hearing is an ordinance amending the zone ordinance of the city of Lynn regarding Essex Street, Porter Street, Jackson Street, and Ingle Street, and it has the following amendments to it. Want me to read the amendments? Yes, dear President Seer, at the meeting of the Lynn Planning Board this evening, the board held a public hearing to determine whether the city of Lynn zone ordinance and city of Lynn map zone may be amended as follows. And the amendments are, on section two, to amend it to mixed-use multi-level P. And section three, allow non-residential uses as permitted below the ground floor in the R3 district. Section four is section 8.1, table of dimension requirements, is hereby amended as followed. Zoning max, district stories, and apartment house 1, 4.0. Section four, 8.3.6, except in the R3 district. And then in section five, multifamily with more than 50 units in the R3 district. And those are the amendments.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street, and this is not too far from my residence. I'm in support of this primarily because it opens up the door for the reuse of the Thurgood Marshall School.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else?
Hi, Pam Edwards, 41 Ocean Street, and I work for the Mass Senior Action Council. Mass Senior Action has been in Lynn for just over 20 years, and I've worked for the organization for the past 12 years. We know firsthand that the seniors are struggling to, and home is one of the biggest costs for them. So we hope that if these units are made for seniors, that we take into consideration the low income of seniors, and that there should be a public housing unit.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, I'm Kathy Paul, I'm with Mass Senior Action. Mass Seniors Action Council has been organizing citizens, senior citizens in Lynn area for over 20 years. We understand that. Firsthand how important safe, affordable housing is for quality of life. What some elected leaders consider affordable is not the reality that I and many other Lynn seniors consider affordable. A recent UMass report found six out of 10 Massachusetts seniors are unable to meet basic needs. With housing costs being the biggest burden, we are here to ask how many of the proposed units will be for low-income seniors? Many of you have told us Lynn has had, has done their fair share, well, basically, the mayor said that. We are not saying the current subsidized housing is not appreciated. We are saying more is needed, and it is needed by those of us who live on less than $2,000 per month. And people like me who live on less than $800 a month. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Turn the gavel over to Vice President Barton.
At this time, the wish of the council, Counsel Seer.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. This is, I think, the first time probably in, at least in the history of Lynn, maybe even in the history of Massachusetts, that what we're looking to do is change the zoning in the neighborhood so that we can create an RFP to make this project make it worth more than what it would be just sitting the way it is. If a developer were to come in, it would be a lengthy process for him to go in to change the zoning, especially in a neighborhood like this. We've had two meetings here in the council chambers with the residents of all of these streets. Personally, I've gone around, knocked on doors, talked to people. Counsel Barton has talked to people here at City Hall, and everybody we've talked with is in favor of this. A portion of the apartments will be low-income, subsidized for the elderly. It'll be 62 and older. At least 10% of the units will be low-income. The rest of them would be market rate. The reason that has to be is so that, to make this project a doable project. What we are doing is taking a building that's almost 100 years old, and we're not going to be knocking it down, but we're going to be looking for a developer to come in and gut the inside of the building and keep the outside. As an engineer put it, the building has really good bones. Some people have said, why not put a school back in that location? Just to bring a school, to go in there and to rehab that building and bring it up to today's standards, would be upwards of over $50 million. To tear it down and build a new school would be close to $100 million. So, it really doesn't make sense to do that. So what we're looking to do is put something there that would have the least impact, not just on the neighborhood, but the city, and bring in some revenue through taxes. And the neighbors over there agree to it. We've created an RFP committee, which is going to put that together, to put it out to bid. We're going to have complete control over the entire process. So, once this goes out to bid, and whoever comes back with the bid, has to follow all the rules of the RFP. Project would have to also be bonded, so that if they weren't able to finish the project, for whatever reason, the city could take it over and the bond would cover the cost to finish it, and then we could turn around and sell it to another developer. So, with that being said, I'm going to make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion made, second. Any other discussion? Counsel Lapierre.
Just a question through the Vice President to Counsel Seer. Is it also included in the cafeteria itself, or is it the main structure, what they're looking to rehab?
It's the entire property, but, and it's still, they're looking at it. But believe it or not, the cafeteria part, which is the newest part, there's a very likelihood that it could be torn down, and that small townhouses, one- and two-bedroom townhouses, for seniors would replace that area of the lot.
Thank you.
Any others?
Yes.
Counsel.
I'm not sure, how many rooms are we planning to build on that building, you know?
They're looking to put 100 apartments.
100 apartments, okay.
Possibly be, possibly could be more, but it definitely could handle 100 apartments.
Is that a one-bedroom apartment, or?
90% of them would be one-bedroom, there would have to be some two-bedroom. And the reason being is because some elderly need healthcare, people that have to stay with them. So that's why we would allow some two-bedroom.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk, roll call.
Sorry, let me get a second on that.
Yes. Second.
Motion made, seconded by Peter Capano.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of RK dollar discount at 70 Commercial Street for a sign permit.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, Attorney Sam Vitale, I'm here in behalf of RK dollar discount. The counselors may be aware of this location, it's on the corner of Commercial and Summer Street. Depending on your age, you might remember the Moroscos family had a food store for many, many years there. Thereafter, other stores moved in, and essentially what we're proposing with this sign is it's a change in the wording, the size of the sign and the awning that are on, facing the Summer Street side are exactly the same. It's just different wording. I brought some examples of what the proposed signs would look like. And in terms of the size, the ordinance regulates number and size. There would still be two signs, the one that fronts on Summer Street, the one would be added on the Commercial Street side. And the other reason we're here is there's an awning. And an awning is an overhanging sign, and you need permission for that. So I'd just like to hand out a few of these for the counselors to look at, and you can compare. The existing sign is shown, the existing sign is shown as well as the proposed sign. It's a new business that would be coming to a storefront that's been rehabbed. The apartments have been rehabbed, the owners have made a substantial investment in the property. And in terms of the signage, as I say, it's the same size as the existing sign, the wording is different. And there's a sign added on Commercial Street, and that's why we're here before you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Vitale. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. I saw the before and after renderings, and I like this one. And I just want to give some credit to the use of an awning. An awning is always a good thing to enhance a facade and to give texture to a strip.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone in opposition, seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counselor Capano.
Motion to grant.
Motion made to grant. Seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Next public hearing is, a public hearing relative to a burnt, dilapidated, or dangerous building located at 12 Kenwood Terrace.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Nobody wishing to speak in favor of tearing this building down? Okay.
Hi, Susan Blum, 15 Kenwood Terrace, 30-plus years. Been looking at this dilapidated, disgusting building out my bay window for at least six and a half years. I want it torn down, it's a disaster. The man that lives next door to me is homesick tonight, he's a lawyer, Mr. Spillane. And he has been taking pictures, and I wish he didn't, he bailed on me right last minute, so I would have had stuff to show you, but there's rats, it's rats-infested, it's boarded up, it's disgusting, it smells, it's covered in mold. There's, it's become an eyesore. I can't sell my house looking at that disgusting property. Nobody wants to come in and buy my house. It's awful. We just, it has to be cleaned up, it has to be taken down, rehabbed or something. Nobody seems to know who owns it, what bank owns it. No one wants to, people have been interested in buying it, to tear it down, to rehab it, and nobody seems to know what's going on with it, so. I would do a cartwheel if I could, if you could tear it down, seriously, would like it gone, burnt. I've even called the fire department and asked them if they could use it as a Chester house. And they said, no, it's being paid, the taxes are being taxed, they're paying on it, you can't do that. So, it's been boarded up. People have gone in and taken all the tube and wiring out of it, it's been vandalized, it's been people living it. Animals were in it, so they boarded up the windows because the windows were open. There were rats and birds and things nesting in there. About three weeks ago, gentlemen were taking the boards off the windows. So I said, what is going on? He said, the bank told us to take them off. Now there's a new sign on the door, some type of a company that has, I don't know, management cleanup company or something. So, I said, well, you can't sell it, this, it's disgusting, and you need a hazmat suit to go in there, and that's how the gentlemen go in to work in there. So, please, tear it down, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. If the council doesn't mind, I'm going to speak real quick from the podium about this. This has been an ongoing issue, not just in this neighborhood, but in a lot of neighborhoods in the city of Lynn, where banks have taken control of a property, foreclosed on a mortgage, and they just don't do the right thing. Either come back and clean it, or put it back on the market so that we can, you know, get a nice family living there. They don't work with the city a lot of times. And I know this house has been a problem for at least a half a dozen years. Totally agree with what Sue said. I know there are other people in the neighborhood that would be here, but I told them they didn't have to come. I'm going to make a motion that we tear the building down. Second. Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Is a petition of AL Prime, 417-423 Boston Street, for a sign permit.
Mr. President, again, Attorney Sam Vitale, I'm here with Anthony Gruber, who's the engineer for AL Prime. The reason we're here is finally we're completing a project that the council began almost a year ago. It was last November 1 that I was before you, and the council granted permission to replace the tanks with modern, larger tanks, so there'd be fewer deliveries, to add a convenience food store with the gas station and the new pumps, and to refurbish that general area as the council had undertaken with the Market Basket and the continued growth of Neighborhood Brands. Counsel Walsh has worked with us, and this is the final approval. I want to thank the Law Department, and Mike Donovan, and others who worked with AL Prime to resolve issues that related not to the sign, but to traffic. What we've got up on there is the board that shows the proposed signage. I've also brought with me, for the counselors, a copy of that plan that shows the location of the signs, and I've got some photographs, kind of before and after as well. If I might, this is the location of AL Prime at that corner in an intersection. And what we propose to do is to take and replace the existing sign, and there's a photograph here of the existing sign, with a sign that will appear, and to give you an idea, the good news is gas is at $3.37 a gallon, as it shows in this photograph, but this is an existing sign that we have and use. As you know, brands use the same kind of architecture and design to show their products. So AL Prime signs are all similar. This is the photograph of the proposed sign, this is the photograph of the existing sign, and this is the photograph of the location where the sign would be placed. And so I would ask the counselors, after you review these, to support this final step. And it works underway at the site, and we're hoping to have completion. The tanks have been removed, the old tanks have been removed, the new tanks are being installed. And I think it will add to the development that's been ongoing with the investment of the Market Basket and the people at Neighborhood Brands. I'd be glad to answer any questions that any member may have. Anthony Gruber showing you the same set of photographs that show the sort of, the proposed sign, the existing sign, and the locations that's up on the board there. Is there any questions?
Any questions?
Is, the height of the sign is going to stay the same in the old photo?
First of all, the sign ordinance requires that you have 10 feet of clearance under a freestanding sign, and that it be not in excess of 20 feet, and I believe that's what the dimensions are.
Okay.
Counsel Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Attorney Vitale, I know that this project has been before the Site Plan Review Committee. Were any of these, their recommendations at all, or?
The Site Plan Review Committee's recommendations dealt with the concerns that Counsel Walsh had expressed, which is, because of the close proximity of the commercial development with the residential neighborhoods, they were concerned about screening, lighting, and landscaping. The signage, as you know, a gas station is, in the sign ordinance, is permitted to have the little signs above the pumps that say what the prices are. These signs, essentially, the freestanding one and the ones that are going to be placed at the new building. But with respect to the Site Plan Review, I don't recall that there was a recommendation as to the signs by the Site Plan Review Committee. We did go through the Site Plan Review Committee, they did make some other suggestions which we've adopted, and they have approved.
All right, we're going to continue the public hearings, so Mr. Vitale could sit. And if there are any more questions that can be asked after, thank you, Mr. Vitale. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else, seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Walsh.
I'd like to make a motion to approve. I've been working with this for a while, and I've been talking with the owners, and there hasn't been anybody that's brought anything to my attention at all, so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi. Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Next public hearing is petition of La Perada Restaurant, 22 Union Street, for an all-alcohol license with hours from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., Saturday through Sunday.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening, my name is Francisco Tolentino, 498 SS3. I've been doing business with my college partner for 10 years. Calucci being very supportive of my business. So we're looking to do, growing with the next step.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone here in the audience that doesn't want to come to the podium, but are in favor, you can raise your hand? Okay. All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed. I know, do you want, Counsel Calucci.
Yes, we're going to approve this, but we have some.
Stipulations.
Stipulations that, Janet, could read out to the minutes, please?
Read them now, okay. Conditions of the liquor license, the stipulations are the tenant will provide security guards or personnel on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday from 6:00 p.m. to close at tenant's sole expense. Tenant agrees to open at 7:00 a.m. and close at 12:30 a.m. as the hours of operation seven days per week. Tenant will serve breakfast, lunch, and dinner. Tenant agrees to keep the restaurant open until closing time and will be serving food in the form of a dinner menu, bar menu, or buffet, not just alcoholic beverages. Tenant is not allowed to serve alcohol before 12:00 noon, lunchtime. No alcoholic beverages are to be served during breakfast hours prior to 12:00 noon. Tenant will have six-month trial period from the city of Lynn and a landlord from the date the license is issued to demonstrate that the tenant will manage the license and not cause any infractions that are in the tenant's control or display any irresponsibility. And finally, the tenant is to maintain an up-to-date insurance policy at all times.
Motion made. Second. Seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozzi.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Thomas McGovern, Birchwood Estates, 6 Upland Place, for residential use in the Boston Street Business District by construction of seven dwelling units.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Mr. President, Attorney Sam Vitale, I'm here with Tom McGovern. This is another success story that the council should share in. I think your predecessor. I think your predecessor, Counsel Cahill, when his council president worked with you and the members who were from Wards 5 and 1 with respect to the rezoning and creation of the Boston Street Business District. This development, which is on North Bend Street, has been an outright success. You granted permission, the council did, for 26 units, of which 25 have either been sold or under agreement. There's one left. And why we're here before you is to seek permission to construct seven additional units in two buildings. One building with four additional units, another building with three units. They would be accessed, as is shown in the photograph, through this development and would sort of complete the curve of North Bend with these residential units that have provided new tax revenue for the city, additional housing for people who want to move and become part of a new neighborhood in the city of Lynn in this little community that's adjacent to the Pine Grove Cemetery. And I think that when you look at the elevation and the architecture, you see it blends in. It's consistent with the development that's already there. And I would hope that the council would give approval so that we can finish the work that really began a couple of years ago with Tom and the members of the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vitale. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Counsel Chakoudas.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas. Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ozy.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Luna Suites, 271 Western Ave, Suite 214, to allow client pickup for certain cake orders Wednesday through Sunday.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Patricia Francis. I'm the owner of Luna Suites. Requesting this permit because right now all the orders are for delivery only, and it limits the amount of revenue that brings to my business. If the clients can come in and pick up their orders, I'm able to give out more orders instead of me just driving around. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor, seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone else seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Counsel Ozy.
Mr. President, I'm gonna make a motion to approve with the conditions that they follow all Health Department regulations and Building Code requirements.
Motion made with stipulations, seconded by Counsel Trahan, roll call.
Counsel-
Discussion, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ozy.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Zachary Andrews for an apartment house use, six units in the Central Business District at 38-44 Andrews Street.
I'm Attorney Vitale. I'm here in behalf of Zachary Andrews, Mr. President. The Andrews family has developed many properties in Lynn. The Granite Street Development, the one on the corner of Union and Chestnut, they do good work. This particular project is to take an empty lot and make it residential. We had an opportunity to deal and see Counsel Chakoudas and show her the plans, and she made some constructive criticism, which we took to heart. And what we want to be able to do is present to the council the plan that reflects Counsel Chakoudas's contributions and ideas. And so I would ask at this time, so we can complete the application process to the satisfaction of Counsel Chakoudas, that the matter be continued and we renew the hearing at your next regularly scheduled meeting.
You're asking that the hearing be continued, correct?
That's correct, Mr. President.
So we just do that with a vote? Not tabled, no. Just, it's not to be tabled, right?
I'll make a motion for it to continue.
Motion to table?
Second. Continue.
Motion to continue.
By the request of the- Roll call.
Yes. Yes. By the request of the petition.
Okay. Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas. Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ozy. Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Next public hearing.
Public hearing relative to a burnt, dilapidated, or dangerous building located at 138 Williams Ave.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Seeing none, that part of the hearing is closed? Mr. Vice President?
Counsel Seer.
Thank you. Looks like I'm tearing down my wad tonight, huh? This is, this is another building. It's a three-family. It's been vacant for about seven or eight years. We towed numerous cars. Had to have the city go in numerous times, clean the lot. The roof is literally blown off the building. I think it's a public safety issue. It's one of those neighborhoods where the houses are five, 10 feet apart. Small lots. I'm gonna make a motion that we demolish this house as soon as possible.
Motion made, seconded by Counsel Trahan. Counsel Cahill.
Thank you. I'm just curious. Has the mayor signaled whether or not she's gonna fund these teardowns?
Well, I'm hoping this one's a public safety issue, so I'm gonna ask the fire department to go out there and go look at it tomorrow and see what they say.
I hope it is funded. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer. Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Counsel Ozy.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Are there any other public hearings?
No.
Public hearings to be set down.
We have the petition of National Grid for a grant of location at a portion of a public way known as Wheeler Street in Neptune Boulevard at the YMCA.
Motion to set down? Motion made.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Committee reports?
Want me to read the ordinance?
Yeah, ordinance and rules. Mr. President- Counsel Ozy.
There was a public hearing and a unanimous vote to submit the amendment regarding constables to the full council.
So that's a motion to approve?
Yes.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
I'll read the ordinance.
Post? Roll call, Mr. President, I think. Do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Yeah, this is an ordinance.
It's an ordinance amending the ordinance relative to fees for application for the constable appointment and other services of civil processes in Lynn with an amendment to three-year appointment at a fee of $300 effective January 1, 2018.
Okay, motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ozy.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Okay, ways and means, and I'm gonna ask the clerk to read them for us and then for a report from the chairman. Counsel Calucci is present by body, not by mind. I'm sorry.
Okay. Transfer the sum of $44,892.61 from the account of reserve to the account of police payroll to fund unanticipated retirements that occurred in FY18. Transfer the sum of $26,776.35 from various accounts to fund city departments' personal buyback per collective bargaining terms. Transfer the sum of $21,011 from the account of reserve to the account of Lynn Fire Payroll to fund unanticipated retirements that have occurred in FY18. Transfer the sum of $75 from the account of collector's expense to the account of prior year unpaid bills to fund unexpected expense from FY17. Transfer the sum of $100.34 from the account of clerk's expense to the account of prior year unpaid bills to fund unexpected expense from FY17. Transfer the sum of $917.98 from the account of state elections expense to the account of city clerk for the repair of an election handicap machine. Order that the city comptroller be hereby authorized to take the following action. Order that the Department of Public Works be allowed to make expenditures for snow and ice control in the excess of the appropriations for those costs pursuant to MGL Chapter 44, Section 31D. Certify as an available fund the amount of $167,287 as allotted to the fire department by the Executive Office of Public Safety and Security for the FY218 State 911 Support and Incentive Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $223,301 as allotted to the school department by the Department of Early Education for the 237 Coordinated Family and Community Engagement Grant. Certify as an available fund the amount of $97,491 as allotted to the school department by the Department of Early Education for the FY18 262 ECA Grant. And finally, order that Her Honor, the mayor, is hereby authorized to execute the First Amendment to the Feasibility Study Agreement between the city of Lynn and the Massachusetts School Building Authority and all necessary documents relating thereto for the new Pickering Middle School.
Counsel Trahan.
That was, um, that was agreed upon by our colleague. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill. Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas. Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ozy. Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Is there an emergency?
I don't sure if, yeah, we need an emergency on, was it on all of them or just?
All of them.
All of them, okay. Motion for emergency for all of them.
Motion made for emergency.
Second.
Seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas. Yes, Counsel Calucci.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Seer.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Ozy. Yes, Counsel Net.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahan.
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh.
Yes.
Yes.
Public safety, Counselor Barton.
Unanimous vote of committee, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Licensing, Counsel Walsh.
Unanimous vote of committee, motion approved.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Utilities, Counselor Capano.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion approved.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
New business, Counsel Ozy.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I'd like to offer a motion that this council move on a resolution to designate Lynn a green community. And, Mr. President, I just have a few words to say about it.
Just a few?
Just a few. I'll be very brief. Lynn will become a green community. Once we're designated as a green community, we'll benefit by becoming a green community. We'll bring tremendous potential for savings on energy spending, the environmental-friendly steps the city takes. Becoming a green community will also have financial benefits. Upon being designated as a green community, we would receive $500,000. This is almost unrestricted financial aid. It would go to certain projects, which, for example, it could be a fire station insulation job, could be a school boiler, could be any city building that would require some energy-efficient improvement or replacement. This, this is a savings that the city needs. We're looking at a very difficult time in our cities, as we all know, with revenue shortfall. Our police, our fire, and our DPW budgets are being level-funded, which is essentially a cut. We need to bring revenue in, and this is an excellent way to bring revenue in. We're eligible for $250,000 a year in grants towards other energy-efficient programs within the city. The city spends $2 million a year on the street lighting alone. If we were to embark on an LED lighting program and we were to receive state grant money for that, there's potential savings of up to $500,000 a year. Gas and oil prices will inevitably go up. And as leaders, we must look to the future and realize there are many savings to be made here. So I would like to move forward on this resolution-
I'll second it.
...support from my colleagues. Thank you.
Motion made, seconded, discussion, Counsel Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to commend Counsel Ozy on spearheading this initiative. I also hope that he would support some legislation that I filed as a direct result of the city of Lynn not being able to afford to convert its LED lights because of the cost alone. The governor had appropriated $11 million in grants. It looks as though towns and suburbia and municipal communities with municipal light plants seem to get precedent over gateway cities like Lynn that would greatly benefit from a conversion. My legislation would actually allow for a revolving fund out of the Renewable Energy Fund, trust fund that we all, as ratepayers, pay into. It's about $800 million in that fund. Cities and towns like Lynn would be able to borrow at zero interest and pay it back with the savings that they received from the LEDs. So we'd like to get some support, hopefully from this council when a public hearing is rendered. I'd love to have, or schedule, I'd love to have some support from the council. But Counsel Ozy is 100% correct. These are ways for cities and towns to get direct revenues now and also enable the Commonwealth to hit our Global Warming Solution Acts that we must be hitting in the next decade. So I commend him on his leadership on this issue and look forward to working with you.
Counsel Cahill. Representative Cahill. Counsel Lapierre. Right ahead.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. I also want to commend my colleague from Ward 1. I commend him for his leadership. A couple of weeks back, he brought in someone from the state to give a presentation, a very comprehensive one at that. And he's absolutely right. When neighboring communities like Salem are gaining about $900,000 approximately a year for becoming more energy-efficient, the tiny, the tiny town of Swampscott has over $800,000 in energy efficiency grants that they get from the state. Lynn is losing out. This is a no-brainer. And many of the vehicles that we're driving in meet the fuel-efficient threshold that they currently, around the city, operate. So we have a grandfathering here that many of the vehicles that are now doing city business would be grandfathered in, meet the standard, if not exceed it. And then in future years, we will become more energy efficient. So to me, a city of 90,000 owes itself, owes it to itself to have an electronic car charger. Why would we want to go to Saugus or Peabody to charge up our electric cars? Because we don't have one of 90,000 people. It's mind-boggling. The new market basket should have one of those electric volt chargers, where people can show up, charge up their car, and then go ahead and be, it's cleaner, it's better energy. I, I think it's a public safety issue in terms of the lighting that Representative Counsel Cahill alluded to. It's time that we get into the modern century of the 21st century, become more green, become more energy efficient. I wholeheartedly endorse the resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Ditto.
Ditto. That's two D's. Anyone else? Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Next public hearing?
Petition of Luna Suites, 271 Weston Ave., Suite 214, to allow client pickup for certain cake orders Wednesday through Sunday.
Motion to take off the table, seconded.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve with stipulations that they are only allowed to serve beer and wine from 11:00 a.m. in the morning until 10:00 p.m. at night.
Second that motion.
The motion made, seconded. Where were you talking about?
141 Essex Street.
Beer and wine license at Vicki's Restaurant.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Counselor Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Seer?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Trahan?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Any other business?
Yes.
Motion, oh, there is? Counselor Capano?
Yeah, I'd like a council order to have the law department look into finding a qualified, certified inspector to inspect the Sluse Pond Dam and to determine ownership, whether it be the City of Lynn or the Lynn Water and Sewer. So an inspection may take place before October 18th, when potential fines may begin.
Second. May the Sluse Pond Dam?
Yes. Someone wants to explain?
Sluse Pond Dam. Wouldn't that fall under Water and Sewer?
The state is requiring, the state, I believe, is requiring an inspection, and I believe that there may be some, there needs to be collaboration, more collaboration, I believe, between Lynn Water and Sewer and the city to determine who has ownership of that particular function, so it may be done and we don't go back and forth and then end up paying fines, which we are being threatened with right now, to my understanding.
Counselor Cahill?
Could we also, could, that information also be forwarded to the state delegation as well? Because we'd like to.
Sure. Yes. I have it, I have it all right here.
Great. All right, it is being done as we speak?
Yes.
Counselor Trahan?
Thank you. For the chair, Counselor Capano, now, is there a problem with the dam? Is that what it is? Or no one wants to?
So I was just made aware of this problem tonight, and I, from my understanding, it, we need expediency. We needed to resolve it right away.
Can I answer that?
I think Counselor Lozey or the law department may be able to explain.
There's not a problem, just to verify, there's not a problem. It's a, a regular inspection that the Department of DCR, Office of Dam Management, will regularly require communities or entities that are responsible for these dams. This dam has existed for over 100 years, and it's.
So who takes care of it now, Counselor Lozey?
Well, that's the question at hand, whether or not it's the City of Lynn or whether, Lynn Water and Sewer regulates the culvert. There's a, a gate valve located over there near the Four Winds.
Right.
And the Lynn Water and Sewer has historically maintained and paid for that. However, the legality of who owns it, I, I don't think anybody knows. Bottom line, and I would hope that my colleagues on the Lynn Water and Sewer, that that's their, the practice of the Lynn Water and Sewer is to inspect dams. It's not the city's job. We don't have a DPW engineer that inspects dams. Water and Sewer, however, has experienced hiring engineers to do that inspection. And my hope is, rather than go around and around about who owns it and who's responsible, if Water and Sewer could just step up and do that inspection and make this go away. That, that's kind of where I think it, we're hoping that it'll go.
Counselor Capano?
Just for, for the record, I, I think the, the Water and Sewer Commissioners who are on the council were not aware of this problem until tonight, and that's why we are taking immediate action right now. I agree that we shouldn't be going back and forth, and we should take care of the problem right away. But apparently, you know, there are people at Water and Sewer and in the city who have been aware of this problem for over a year. And, you know, it was my intention that if we do this council order, that we will be able to resolve this before the October 18 deadline, which we had just found out about probably a couple hours ago today.
Counselor Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank Counselor Capano for bringing this dam problem to our attention. I've just been handed the dam study, and I have a lot of dam questions. So with that being said, maybe a dam tour would be appropriate, so we can get the appropriate dam people there.
Thanks.